Okay, anyone else want to call to me in order? First item is roll call.
Thank you. Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Selly.
Here.
Here's the call.
Okay. Uh, next, excuse me, next item is demarcation led by Pastor Darryl Jones from Crossroads Church. It's followed by a pledge allegiance from Alderman Johnson. Let's pray together.
We give you thanks again, Father, tonight for another opportunity to steward what you've entrusted to us in this community. I thank you for the men and women that sit before us and the time that they serve and the dedication to this community. And I just pray your blessings on them, on Scott as he, as he goes out. Thank you for his service to our community and for Mike Scully and the years and years of service. We are just so thankful for him and I just pray you will bless he and his family as he takes this step down and, and takes that next step in his journey in life and just pray your ultimate blessings on him. We're so thankful for, for what he's done over the last eighteen years here in our community and served on our board and served our, our city. And we give you thanks for that, for Valerie and Trina as they step up. We just pray for them and pray that they would be able to educate themselves quickly and get up to speed as they step into seats that have been held for a while and with other board members that have, that have been seated for, for a few years. I just pray for them and pray that they would integrate well and that the rest of the board would receive them. And, and again, that God, we can, we can begin to step forward and take new steps and continued steps in making this community all that you desire for it to be through your people and through your creation. I pray in Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, next item is the approval of the agenda.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add presentations after ordinances, item number nine, a presentation for Alderman Scully and Alderman Schaefer. Knowing them as we do, if there was presentations, they probably wouldn't show it up.
That the only?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add the presentations.
I move.
Got a motion from Alderman Arnold to have a second.
Second.
Second Alderman West, any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We move on to next item, which is police officer of the office for Jason Youngs. If you would please step forward.
Aye, Jason Daniel Youngs.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
I will observe the provisions.
I will observe the provisions.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Grand Valley.
Of the City of Grand Valley.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Discharge all of my duties.
Discharge all of my duties.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Grand Valley Missouri Police Department.
Of the Grand Valley Missouri Police Department. So help me God.
By the power vested in me as today clerk of the City of Grand Valley, I commission you as police officer from the Grand Valley Missouri Police Department on the twenty-seventh day of April two thousand sixteen. You may leave.
Okay, next item on agenda is the considered agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the considered agenda?
I move to accept considered agenda.
I have a motion from Alderman Scully to accept the considered agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley, any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor, we skipped citizen participation.
Oh, I already marked it. I would go back to citizen participation, but I know Mrs. Totten. Uh, this is time to step forth for citizens to address the board. We ask citizens, please step forward to the microphone and give your name and address to the record. On our side, Mrs. Totten.
Oh, should I give my new alias Nancy Notton? I was privileged this Saturday to go to a luncheon and I want to say thank you to everybody because it's not just me, but the Missouri State Council of ESA International made me the, gave me the Diana Award for the state of Missouri. And I feel that the people right here in our group, Shannon Davies helps with stuff that we do. I have JJ's, uh, the Bank of Grand Valley, the Library, Charlie's Roadhouse, uh, the Valley Speedway, EWS, Sears Store. Some give me newspapers, I take them to the veterinarians. It's, it, it just all intermingled. And I am very flattered because meeting these young, these women, I'm going to ask for everybody if they have coupons, and everyone knows I'm a couponer, but they even take expired coupons and these are going to our military bases to help the young guys. And I told them, I said, "I'll put out the word, I've got a big mouth, ask anybody in town, and if you just let me know you got them, I'll be glad to get them." Because, uh, there was a gentleman from one of the bases and he was, said that this helps the young families coming into the military through some of this when they go to their, what do you call it? Uh, where they buy their groceries anyway, but they take the expired coupons. So, that's my new agenda, besides everything else I play around with. And I want to say thank you to everybody that has contributed to the little things we do. And they were so generous, the only thing they did spell my name right on was my check. And that's going to buy gifts, they took the award back so they could put my name on it right, but the, we're going to go buy bingo gifts for my nursing home. So, I told them, the Lord must have known because I need to get some more gifts. So, I thanked them very much and I thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to address the board? Seeing none, then we move on to ordinances.
Bill B-15 dash zero eight, second reading, ordinance two three five nine, and ordinance amending chapter one fifteen, officers and employees, section one fifteen point zero three zero, section one fifteen point one hundred, and section one fifteen point two hundred, total ordinances, City of Grand Valley, Missouri, ordinance two three five nine.
Mayor, I recommend that we take, um, ordinance, or motion B-15 dash eight for its second reading, making it, um, ordinance number twenty-three fifty-nine.
I have motion Alderman Johnson to approve bill B-15 dash zero eight for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-three fifty-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley, any discussion? Ryan, were you able to find out any of this information I saw last time?
Yes, um, specifically regarding, so I talked to several communities. The going thought out there is that residency, uh, to an extent, has passed its use to life, but I couldn't get any examples of communities that do not have residency for chief elect, or appointed officials.
Okay. We haven't yet talked to anybody about how it affects jobs, folks in jobs and candidates.
Again, that's, that's part of the problem is that you have to have somebody that's committed to move to, to the community that you want to. So, in that sense, um, it limits your pool. If you have somebody that's not willing to relocate, then, then you're not going to get those applications. Typically, in the upper management type of positions, that's the exception rather than the rule. Um, a lot of city administrators, uh, chief of police, the only position that this really seems to be a problem with is, is just the city clerk position alone. You typically will get people from within the community that would put in for that rather than relocate.
Uh, Mr. Cook, maybe you can answer this question for me. I know with city administrator contracts, we can require it as part of the contract, separate from having an ordinance.
Yes.
Can you do employment agreements for other positions that require it, or since they're not contracted positions, can't do that? I would say, could you have an employment agreement with your, with your chief of police if the board at that time chose for that individual to live in town?
Well, I would think that anytime you have a negotiated contract for employment, you can, you can negotiate and discuss any term you want in that contract.
Typically, we don't have contracts for like city clerk or police chief, though. But we could, I mean, in theory?
I don't think, I don't see any reason you couldn't.
Okay.
They're not, and they're not elected, so they don't have a, a residential requirement there. I don't see any prohibition. I mean, I haven't researched it to see what other, I can't think of any statutory prohibition we would have.
Anyone else have anything?
I think, Mayor, we should do it on, uh, I think you should do it on the basis of the contract and you interview the people that come in because it doesn't give you much, like Ryan said, it, uh, limits the people that apply for the job if they know they have to live in Grand Valley. I don't know if you want to get in that position in the future or not.
You know, when I sat on, and went through all the applicants when we filled our city clerk's position the last time, I had two case boxes full of resumes that we had to go through and, uh, it was a daunting task, but all were willing to move to town, so, uh, so, and, so, um, I'm still, yeah, it's a technical issue.
I could see the city administrator, but I think the other two positions is something I would look, I think it, in my opinion, you should look at on a one-on-one basis. It's my thoughts.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
I think there's a problem HR-wise, if it isn't a conditional, an ordinance, you just randomly say, "Yeah, you can have it to live here." No, you can't have it because you don't get to live here. I think if you have an ordinance, you have to enforce the ordinance.
Well, if it's a requirement within the job restriction and it isn't followed by ordinance, that is something we can stand on.
Right.
Um, but if it's, if it is by ordinance, you can default to that, so.
But you can't do it on a case-by-case base.
You, you can, if you have.
You can say, "Why, maybe you could have the job and you don't live here."
If you have it within the job restriction, you can. Anything within the job restriction, if it's, if it's within the job restriction before it's posted, very.
Yeah, so say you're hired for city clerk, if we post that you have to move, that points in the D.
If you post it as a residency requirement within the position, yes, you can.
How many of you would move to Grand Valley to close your job?
Any.
I'd like to know how many that live outside of Grand Valley. Jamie lives in the country, don't you? Uh, Ryan doesn't live here.
Mayor, this isn't, this isn't a public discussion.
I don't think you live here. How many are going to, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But I just was wondering how many are going to give up where they live to move here.
Anyone else have anything?
All of them.
Okay. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
No.
Arnold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
No.
Headley?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
West?
Five one.
James?
Bill fifteen, B-15 dash zero nine, first reading, and ordinance submitting the question, quote, shall a commission be chosen to frame a charter, close quote, to include a list of candidates for that commission to the City of Grand Valley, Missouri voters in general? The municipal election will be held April five, two thousand sixteen. First reading, bill B-15 dash zero nine.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B-15 oh nine for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman Schaefer to accept bill B-15 dash zero nine for its first reading, bringing it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Move to table.
Second.
I have motion from Alderman Arnold to table, second Alderman Johnson. Any discussion on the motion to table?
Yeah, I, I have several problems with this. One, it, it goes against what's been done in the past. Normally, new ordinances are brought up for the second portion of a meeting where the board is switching, um, like this rather than in the first. And, um, definitely would disagree with the second double reading. But also, I think, uh, you know, it's, um, I just, we had talked about this before, we asked the city to research what the potential cost of this, we haven't got an answer on that. We scheduled a workshop, wanted to discuss this for summer of this year, and I just don't see how we can pass it through with the lame duck board.
There are so many questions about it. I'm not saying at this point I'm opposed to it, but at this point, there's not enough known that I could support it, so I'd rather table it and deal with it at a later time. We have ample time to get it on the April ballot for next year after we do the research and allow city staff to bring in the information that we've requested so we can make this decision more educated and better, better prepared to go that path if we decide to choose to go that way.
Mayor, my thoughts are, if it's not going to cost the city to put it on the ballot, which according to the, uh, election board, it will cost us nothing, why not let the voters decide what they want? Why should, why should the six, six people sit on this panel and decide what the voters should, should, should they get it or not? So, why not put it on the ballot and let them make the minds up for you guys? I mean, it's not going to cost nothing to do this and let them decide what they want. That, it's their city, not six people sit on this panel. You know, if citizens of Grand Valley want this, I'm sure we can find in the budget to make it happen.
I think I've seen that response to some other issues out there that citizens out there don't know enough about this issue to, to vote on it. And I think for us to enter into this process, not knowing more than we do about the process and what it will entail and what it will end up looking like, uh, at the other end, and knowing the possible gains and, and/or negatives that could come out of it. If we aren't educated on it, how can we ask the citizens to be educated on voting on doing, and starting down this path and spending the funds that will do this? You say it won't cost anything?
No, it won't cost nothing to put it on the ballot.
It will cost us to put it on the ballot, but it breaks down by shares of what items are on that ballot. If we are the only one listing anything, our elections and this issue, we'll pay the whole thing. Fifty percent of it will go toward our election, fifty percent of the cost will go toward our, toward this issue, or would be budgeted out that way, or should be budgeted out that way. So, to say that it would not be any cost is, is, is a misstatement.
Well, not, this, this, um, Scott, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ryan, did you, you, you and I had talked about this, were you able to, you and Jamie?
We reached out late, late last week to the election commission. I have not heard back an estimate from them, but the estimate that we heard was about fifteen thousand dollars.
For the April, for the April ballot?
Yeah. Jamie, would, she can speak up to it.
If I can speak to this as well, with any election that we have, um, the election board is not, uh, able to give us an estimate of what an election will cost simply because of what Alderman Arnold said. They don't know what's going to be on the ballot until they know what's going to be on the ballot. So, once they do that, we're, we're already after a budget decision, we're already after all the, um, all the times that we can approve or dis, you know, or, or disqualifying budgets for your issue. So, we basically have to budget without knowing. And ultimately, with a ballot issue like this, in the past, what we've seen is we've had a fifteen thousand dollar cost.
That.
Over and above that general election that we usually just see during that cost.
Well, that's, now, when I called the election, the election office, they, they told me that when we have an election in April, it's seventeen thousand dollars, like this one was seventeen thousand, and we would split, the city paid the seventeen thousand is because the school board wasn't involved in that election. When the school board's involved, we split the cost of the school board. And the only cost to add anything on the ballot is if there's a lot of stuff on there, but it's, the, the cost is very minimum, it's just basically to pay for the paper to put on the ballot. And that's how it was explained to me. And talking to the, uh, folks in Jeff City, the ethics committee, uh, they pretty much verified what I found out from the election board in Ja, in, uh, Jackson County.
Historically, what we've seen, and you very well could be right with what they're telling you, but historically, what we've seen and how we've budgeted for any extra ballot issues has been ten to fifteen thousand dollars depending. And that's simply based on what you had just said, uh, regarding the school board having any tax levies on the, on the ballot or having an election of their own on the ballot, like they did not this year. So, our costs were extended about seven thousand dollars more this year than they were last. Uh, and I can tell you that in the five years I've been here, that number, regardless if the board, the school board has had something on the ballot or not, those numbers for the City of Grand Valley have, have always gone up by at least three thousand dollars. So, I can't see it eliminating any costs on our part. That's, that's.
Right, and that's, that's. I think that's where the mix-up is, is that we're getting told that if we put this on the ballot, it's going to be another ten or fifteen thousand, and it's not. We still, bottom line is, if we carry a election by ourselves, we pay fifteen thousand, and if there's a couple things on the ballot, that's still including that fifteen thousand, there's not another fifteen thousand added on to it. Correct?
That's not my understanding.
Do they charge us more because there's more printing involved?
There's more on the ballot, uh.
So, I mean, they have to print more on the ballot.
It's considered special election cost, is what it's considered.
Even though it's a regular election?
Right, because it's a special election issue, not a general election issue. It's, I'm sure it's red tape somewhere, but that's how I understood it and that's how I'm, uh, explaining.
And this just drives to the reason why I think that without having better knowledge of how this is going to affect our budget, we, we need to step back, table this motion so that, uh, we can find out the answers and be better informed before we make this decision.
Um, to the comments that we don't have the right to make those decisions, that's what we were elected for, to make decisions for the city. Um, that's, the people put their trust in us to do that. Um, I also took just a, um, rough poll, I know it's not scientific, but I got on Facebook, asked people to comment where they felt we should, uh, have a charter, whether we shouldn't have a charter, whether, or if they were undecided. No one said they don't want a chatter, or a charter. There were twenty-one people that said no, about six or seven no's were emphatic about it, and there were thirty-seven people that said they were undecided. Um, that doesn't show me much support by the citizens, and this is cross references, uh, cross-section of, of the citizens that are deciding this, so. Also, in the, um, proposal, the ordinance says there's twenty-five thousand dollar legal cost to this, too. So, whether or not the fifteen thousand dollars is accurate on election, the twenty-five thousand dollars changed somewhere.
The twenty-five, that, that was, if it pass, Ryan, correction, if it passes, legal fees would be necessary to?
Yes.
Do it, put together?
Twenty-five thousand was the, um, number that we've, that we received from Matt Gary last week. Uh, Jim Cook and I worked on that. It, it could be more, though. I mean, it's, it's, there's no way to forecast the type of legal fees that it would require, but that was the best.
Would that be a budget to cost, we got to budget for it next year?
I'm sorry?
Would that be a budget to cost, we got to budget for it next year?
I included it as a.
Saying, in case it passed or whatever was on there?
Yeah, I included it as a fiscal, here sixteen, or seventeen cost, sixteen and seventeen.
We had asked previously, um, there were some other cities that applied this, how much it costs them, and did you ever get a figure on that?
No, unfortunately not. I mean, we, we've been planning on doing this for a summer workshop. Um, there's, um, homework that's going to go into it.
Other reasons we take.
Took quite a while just to prepare the legal research to, to get an ordinance together.
I guess, Mayor, I would like to say that I don't think we have sufficient evidence or sufficient information at this point in time to make this decision, and I support the tabling of this motion.
Anyone have any additional discussion?
I'd like to address, uh, Alderman Arnold's comments of, uh, people can't educate themselves. That's how I, that's how I read about it. You go online, you read about it, you read the pros and the cons. I mean, there's a lot of intelligent people living in this city and they, it's, it's just a matter of sitting down and reading about it. And we're a big enough city, it's time we move forward and give more decisions to our public than for six people to sit up there and make all the decisions. There's a couple things that could have been put on the ballot that could have saved a lot of headaches. And that's one of the reasons I, I would have liked it, started this first, I would have liked it, but due to different things going on, it wasn't the proper time to do it. And I think now that things have got, we see progress that's getting ready to happen, we can, the budget will be able to handle it.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I recently read quite extensively out of the Raytown newspaper where they just had this issue on their ballot. It was quite contentious from one side to the other. They spent a little over seventeen, or had seventeen thousand dollars budgeted for their legal expenses. Uh, one of the gentlemen that was set on the, uh, Missouri Municipal League's Committee for charters, which that committee says that charters for all towns of all sizes was in opposition of the charter in Raytown. And that Raytown initiative failed by fair numbers because of the conflict over, and the understanding of it. And they mailed a copy of the charter to every citizen in the town so they had the opportunity to educate themselves. But there were still significant, uh, letters to the editor and others in the paper there that spread misinformation and misunderstandings and different opinions. Uh, we are at a, at a loss here in our community. We don't even have the paper to help spread the information. Uh, so, it, that's part of the process here, too, is how we will educate the people through meetings and so forth, which will add to the costs to try and figure a way to get people to come to the meeting so we can explain to them what this charter means, what it entails, and how it changes the way we govern the city. But it, it's still such a daunting task that, that we don't know enough about, that to actually say we're going to put it on the ballot now is a little premature.
I guess I go back to we're not reinventing the wheel here. We have, there's, there's cities, like I said, Blue Springs and Independence, they, they have put together a charter. We can visit what they've done, they've saved tons of cost on it. And, uh, you have to be a certain size city to go through a charter. I don't, I don't, I didn't have to disagree with what he was saying because you have to be over a certain number to even move from a class ward to go into a charter. So, it's not, it's not set up for all cities. You have to have a certain amount of residents.
Ryan, maybe Jim might fill a chime in on this. As for educational purposes, the city wouldn't be able to really budget or do anything on that, correct? It would have to be groups of either for or against it?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the city wouldn't be able to.
I mean, we put on the ballot, but the city wouldn't really.
Like any other.
Wouldn't be able to put anything out. There would have to be.
We could, well, we could put information out to educate people, we just couldn't call for a vote one way or, or the other. I mean, you can, you can educate folks about initiatives all day long, uh, you just can't say yes or no.
Be very careful about it, or stay very neutral, though.
Right.
I, you know, people come to city meetings, we struggle with getting them coming to meetings with, since I've been sitting up here for four years, I, I just don't see that. We, since I've been set up here for four years, I, I just don't see that. I mean, it's basically going to be, if people want it, they'll read about it, they'll study it, and they'll figure it out on their own. Or, like Mary just said, group of people go around and, and, and talk to people about it, get their information, tell them about it. It's, that's how it's going to get out there.
And through that process, there will be misunderstandings due to misunderstanding of a correct statement or taking it the wrong way. It's, it's just, there's just so, so much that, that goes into that, so, I, I just-
That's in anything, though. If you go out and talk about, you're going to have, people are going to read into it how they want.
But this, Mayor, this, this doesn't say we're going to be, do a charter or be a charter city. It just, uh, opens the door to start the discussions. Without that, we can't even open the door to start discussions.
It starts discussions with the cost. Because you're, you're going to have the election cost, you're going to have to set legal money aside for that committee that has to be formed to put the language together that's going to be the charter. Uh, there'll be staff costs because we all have to back that committee up with probably doing paperwork and, and putting the material together. Uh, so, there'll be quite a bit of, of cost there involved, and then we may get to the end of the process and put it on the ballot, as Raytown did, and, and people vote it down, and we've spent twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars on something that's-
That's if it passes.
That's if it passes.
If it passes, so, if you, if you put it on, if you put it on the ballot next April, then you've got this entire year to prepare for it the next year. And then, and then that's when you've got to figure your costs into it. So, right now, it's just putting it out there and letting the, the voters vote on it if they want it. And from, from, when I was out walking and talking to people, there, there was quite an interest for it.
I, I still say that there's more than ample time between now and April of two thousand and sixteen to put this motion up. I, I stand by my table and call the motion.
Uh, should I call the votes? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Shaffer?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Scully?
No.
Arnold?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Hedley?
No.
Three, three, Mayor.
Okay. No, on the motion, the table?
Motion, the table fails.
Hey, back on the, back on the bill. Any discussion on the bill?
Same arguments. We've got, we've got a workshop set up midsummer to discuss this. None of us know enough about this, and I think it's just ridiculous to vote on it now. I think it's also against normal procedures to bring up something when we're switching the board mid, mid-meeting today.
Ryan, when were we going to, when was that workshop scheduled for? What were we going to do?
Yeah, when we talked about it, I just said we were going to bump it out to June or July, so, it was coming up on Jamie and I's reminder list, probably in mid-May, to go ahead and schedule the workshop.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, all in favor of the motion to put on the ballot, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Johnston?
No.
Scully?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Wes?
No.
Hedley?
Yes.
Three, three, Mayor.
No. Let's do the workshop.
The first reading fails. Four, three, against. Jamie? The votes here are just a quick. Uh, Bill B fifteen dash ten, first reading. An ordinance declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Green Valley, Missouri, April seventh, two thousand and fifteen. First reading, Bill B fifteen dash ten.
I move that we accept Bill B fifteen dash ten for its first reading and bring it back to its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill B fifteen dash ten for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six, zero, first. Second reading, Bill B fifteen dash ten, it will be ordinance, Jamie, we're going to forty-three sixty or sixty-one. That was sixty. Forty-three sixty. An ordinance declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Green Valley, Missouri, April seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Second reading, ordinance two-three-six-zero.
I move that we accept Bill B fifteen dash ten for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-three sixty.
I have motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill B fifteen dash ten for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-three sixty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
West?
No.
Scully?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Six, zero, Mayor.
Uh, if I can all, Shaffer, please.
Like, if you're going to figure with the flat, we're going to use other, uh, Tom Curran Ward one, Alderman. And they just started with questions about their plan, and related to, talking to Hasky Loader, I said he's not responding to the question. This is a long show. I'm going to, I'm going to-
He's got to remember that, isn't he? I'm going to be a great contact loader.
So, I want to thank you for all you've done. I said it right now, I think, Mayor. Thank you. I got all of them so. All right, we've got, uh, this is a little bigger. Eighteen years, eighteen years. Okay. We, we struggled, let me get that. We were going to start with the key to the city, but after I gave it to Alderman last year, I realized it doesn't open anything. So, there, I don't know. Good. And I thought, well, you know, we should do, we should have all the past Aldermen, the Mayors, and city legislators come up and, you know, say thanks for all your time, but I got, I was just kind of the city legislator, kind of already developed figures on it, so, I thought, no, we're not doing that, it's going to go off for a while, so, uh, since this recognition of your eighteen years, I mean, I know it's a small token, and there's probably no way the city can ever pay you back for all the times that you've been, all the things you've done for the city, but, uh, you've been here since I've been involved, and, you know, that makes you go, but, so, you're grateful for your more time too, and again, just, you know, thank all you've done. Yeah. But again, thank you all your time, we can never pay you back. We have pig and-
I bet you gabbo show up.
It'll take a big show.
Yeah, Graham calls me back to order. Uh, next item on this part of the agenda is elected official oath of office. Start with Ward one, Valerie Palacek, if you please come forward. You didn't want one? Jim Wallace, Alderman Johnston, do you want to sit down also? And then I'll have, uh, should we just Stanley come forward also, please?
Oh, he's the one who's going to lose.
I'm going to do it, but no one else will. I am filing a square in front. That I possess the qualification-
That I possess the qualification.
For right by law-
For right by law.
For the office of Alderman-
For the office of Alderman.
That I would support-
That I would support.
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Missouri.
And the laws and ordinances-
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Green Valley, Missouri.
Of the city of Green Valley, Missouri.
And that I vote-
And that I vote.
The best my ability-
The best my ability.
To faithfully perform the duty-
To faithfully perform the duty.
Of the office of Alderman-
Of the office of Alderman.
In the city of Green Valley, Missouri.
In the city of Green Valley, Missouri.
Therein my duty, therein.
Therein my duty, therein.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
By the power vested in the city clerk of the city of Green Valley, I commission you as Alderman for Ward one, two, and three for the city of Green Valley, Missouri on the twenty-seventh day of April, two thousand and fifteen. Congratulations.
You guys get to read all the bills coming up.
That's what I was looking for, didn't we, huh? Next on our agenda, the, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I have motion, Alderman Haley, to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman West. Any discussion? Now, I had to, he's gone, but I had to, I, I had to remind Alderman Haley, I said someone needs to do this because in my eleven years, Mike Scully has only not done it once.
I literally just said it in my-
So, I was worried that no one else would remember to do it, so I remembered Alderman Haley did it. Uh, any additional discussion on the consent agenda, then? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, next item is new business. We have a fireworks permit for the Grand Valley Band Parents Association.
Uh, Mayor Board, this, uh, application came to us, uh, on the Tuesday after our last meeting, and the band parents requested that we provide you the application and the information, and as you can see, they're here to discuss the issue with you, so.
Hi. My name is Tony Wichman, and I'm the Grand Valley Band Parent Association President. I kind of throw myself on your mercy tonight because we didn't, we weren't aware that there was an April first deadline for the permit application, and we came in, I think, a few days, a few days after that. Um, one of the things that we did back in January when we started our planning meetings, we printed all of our forms that we needed, put them in a folder, and we didn't notate that there was a deadline. We knew that the permit selection process started January first, but we didn't realize that it closed on April first. I think we were thinking like May. So, we're here to, um, propose that we are given exceptional, um, status so that we can do this. We have our application complete. I also have, um, school district letterhead, the, um, permission from Dr. Snow, um, giving us, um, the site permission at the corner of Sniabar and double A, or Eagles Parkway. It's the same site that we've had for several years. Um, last year, our fi- our fireworks tent made just under twenty-four thousand dollars. And last year, during marching season alone, we spent just about twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, this covers things like fourteen thousand dollars for transportation. We, um, I don't know if anybody saw the show last year, it was boxed out. We had several of those different sized orange boxes, and they took quite a bit to transport. When we went from Grand Valley High School to various competitions, we traveled in three semi-truck trailers with, um, uh, all of our equipment and, and, uh, uniforms and the props. That alone, like I said, was fourteen thousand. The, um, the building materials for the props was about eight thousand dollars, and then the, um, the food and operations uniform kind of thing is about two thousand extra dollars. So, um, Grand Valley Band Programs is a great ambassador for the city of Grand Valley. Our, um, my mouth is dry. Our jazz band just recently got returned, um, yesterday from Branson, Missouri, where they represented as well, and they performed at various, um, sites. And not only do we have the marching program in the fall, but we have winter guard, jazz, percussion, concert bands. We're getting ready to go to Columbia solo and ensemble-
Contest.
Um, on Thursday. So, we really need this source of funding. It is our greatest fundraiser of the year, and we ask for your approval.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a question for Mr. Cook. Um, I, one of the, one of the board's, one of my supervisors, I won't let that influence my vote, but should I abstain?
What'd you say, one of your-
One of the people on this board, the, for the band, one of my supervisors, should I abstain if it's not going to influence my vote, but-
I don't think so. I mean, we're going to have this issue coming up, you know, in some other areas. I don't think it's, I don't think the connection's direct enough to cause you a problem.
Thank you.
Do you have?
Do we have any obligation for the chamber to notify them of this late application, or? I mean-
They are aware of it, they, they have a-
Are they supportive?
I don't know.
I haven't talked about it, I don't know.
It, it did come up the other day in the chamber board meeting. I will say that there was no official support or dissension, you know, for against it, so, um, it, it was a topic of conversation. Uh, they noted that they had theirs in on time, and that was the end of the discussion.
Did we have three last year?
Yes.
Is it the Boy Scouts the only one that hasn't applied to have one last year?
The Boy Scouts are, um, working with the chamber.
Okay.
So, it's usually, um, the band parents, the chamber-
The, the band parents, chamber together, correct?
Um, not for several years.
Okay. So, Boy Scouts, chamber together, band parents.
Yeah.
They didn't do one last year, did they?
No.
Okay.
I think there were only two chambers.
Where there was, there were, I'm sorry, I didn't put it.
The football boosters, I think, at some point, or-
We used to partner with them at some point also, but they no longer do the fireworks either. So, it's solely become a band fundraiser.
Okay. Do you want to have any other questions?
No.
Okay, if not, I'll indicate a motion to approve the permits.
Someone-
Motion, Alderman Haley, to approve the permit. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second Alderman Johnston. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, everyone good? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, the ordinance is?
Bill B fifteen dash eleven, first reading. An ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance of taxable neighborhood improvement district limited general obligation refunding temporary notes for En's Grand Valley Marketplace Project Series two thousand and fifteen, city of the Grand Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. First reading, Bill B fifteen dash eleven.
I move that we accept Bill B fifteen dash eleven for its first reading and bring it back by title only for its second reading.
I have motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill B fifteen dash eleven for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Hedley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Members of the board, I'd like to introduce Tom Calico. Members of the board, I'd like to introduce Tom Calico. He's here to discuss this tonight.
Okay. And just to let, uh, Alderman Palace check, Alderman Stanley know, I had talked to Tom beforehand. There might be more information here than might be absorbed tonight. So he has agreed to, before we do the second reading on this, next meeting, to come in like, say at six thirty, if the two of you want to sit down with him and he can kinda give you the background and everything a little bit more. That way you might be more comfortable with it.
That's good.
Great, thanks Mayor. Well, Mayor and, uh, members of the board and new members of the board, congratulations. Um, I'm, I'm gonna cover this fairly globally and briefly and I'd be happy to respond to any questions and of course, as Mayor offered, I'll come by early at the next meeting to go into some of the background. But, um, these, this ordinance that you have before you this evening um, authorizes and sets the terms for the issuance of taxable neighborhood improvement district temporary notes. Um, just to remind you, these temporary notes are what's called a limited general obligation pledge. Uh, what a limited general obligation pledge means is that, um, if for some reason the revenues of the neighborhood improvement district are not sufficient, uh, to pay the debt service, then, uh, the city is obligated to pay from the first available monies within its general fund. But the city cannot raise taxes to pay that. Thus the limited part of the limited general obligation. These temporary notes would refund and essentially extend the term of neighborhood improvement district temporary notes that were issued back in two thousand and twelve. Um, those were issued to fund various public improvements associated with the, uh, the, it's, it's redevelopment project number two of the interchange TIF, also known as the Grand Valley Marketplace Project. It's the project at the northeast quadrant of the interchange and it takes, and we were talking a little at the break, it's, it's basically all the development there that you see on the northeast with the exception of the, uh, the hotel. So it does include the Casey's that's in there, includes the theater and then the vacant land that, that's around it. And as I said, it was initially financed various public improvements and that's what neighborhood improvement districts do. They fund various public improvements. These were street, water, sewer, uh, primarily improvements. Um, and the way the process works is you issue these temporary notes, you build the project and then when the project's complete, you issue neighborhood improvement district bonds, which are a longer term in nature. And then those bonds are paid from special assessments that are imposed on the property owners, uh, with, within the district. And there'll be twenty-year assessments for this particular district on a square foot basis. Because the project has not fully matured, it's not fully developed, um, it is the recommendation of the staff, um, and myself that we go ahead and issue these, these new temporary notes, which will allow us to postpone the issuance of the bonds and thus postpone the imposition of the special assessments. And will give the project a bit more time to mature and develop um, so as to better able to pay the special assessments. The notes that we're issuing are eighteen-month notes. Um, so they'll, they'll go for a term of eighteen months. They are callable after six months. So if things should progress and six months from now, we feel like it, time is right, we could go ahead and issue the, the takeout bonds at that time. So the ordinance that you have before you tonight on the first reading, um, would authorize, uh, the issuance and set the terms. Um, we will then issue the notes through a negotiated sale with Piper Jaffrey that is scheduled for May eleventh, which is the next meeting night. And then, so we will come back, um, that evening for you to have the second reading and at that time we'll be able to present you with the final results of the sale, the interest rate and all, all that kinda stuff. And I say we, and I meant to mention this at the outset, especially for the new, the new folks, um, my job, well, first of all, I'm with a firm called Springstead, that wasn't mentioned. And my job is the municipal advisor for the city. You can imagine that the issuance of municipal bonds is something that the city doesn't do every day. It's a very highly specialized field. And so cities generally, uh, will employ municipal advisors to assist them in that process. So that's, that's what I do and that's what the firm does. Um, another person you'll, you'll see, you'll see Sid Douglas from the firm of Gilmore and Bell. He's an attorney at Bond Counsel. And so when I say we, Sid will probably be with me next meeting as well to, to discuss the, the actual sale results. Um, with that, be happy to respond to any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Alright, we'll see you next meeting.
Alright. Anyone have any additional discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six, excuse me, six zero first, Jamie.
Next up, resolutions?
Resolution, hmm, R fifteen dash thirty. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Grand Valley, Missouri to approve the installation of a street light near Seven Twelve Southwest Lake Drive. Resolution R fifteen dash thirty.
Mayor, do we accept resolution R fifteen thirty as read?
Okay. I have motion Alderman Arnold to approve resolution R fifteen dash thirty. Do I have a second? Second Alderman West. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor, Jim. Resolution R fifteen dash thirty-one. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Grand Valley, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with State Bank of Missouri for banking services. Resolution R fifteen dash thirty-one.
I move that we accept resolution R fifteen dash thirty-one as read.
I have motion Alderman West to approve resolution R fifteen dash thirty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Haley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. Resolution R fifteen dash thirty-two. Resolution authorizing the Board of Alderman to issue a moratorium on short-term lending businesses, City of Grand Valley, Missouri. Resolution R fifteen dash thirty-two.
Mayor, I, I move we accept resolution fifteen dash thirty-two as read.
I have motion from Alderman Haley to approve resolution R fifteen dash thirty-two as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, just to remind you, this is the moratorium that was discussed at the last board meeting following the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting where they recommended that we issue, um, this until further research could be done into the planning and zoning. Mr. Murphy, you have anything else to add?
I was just gonna add, after talking with City Attorney Cook, uh, six months is what he felt would be a reasonable time to let us get in and, and do our research and go through that process, uh, to see if we wanna further regulate that industry.
Okay, anyone have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. Mayor, the, uh, next three ordinances I'll read together. Resolutions, um, by the Board of Alderman, City of Grand Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into supplemental agreements, three, four, and five, with Bartlett and West Incorporated for Consulting Engineering Services for the following respective scope of work. Fifteen thirty-three to provide a citywide, uh, system evaluation report for MDR. Thirty-four, engineering survey and design of twenty fifteen water main improvements. And thirty-five to provide engineering survey and design of tire load booster pump station upgrade. Those are resolutions, uh, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five.
Mayor, I move we accept resolution thirty-three, resolution fifteen thirty-four, and resolution fifteen thirty-five as read.
I have motion from Alderman Haley to approve resolutions R fifteen dash thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, the three supplemental agreements that we're discussing tonight are all per, um, budget and previous discussion. I'd like Mr. Murphy to talk about each one of them and just give you a, a small recap. This is gonna be the beginning of, of a larger project, obviously. This is the research and design. Uh, but I would like for, for him to just give you an intro to the three.
Uh, yeah, starting with, uh, the third, um, item there. Basically, that's an update to our two thousand and seven, uh, master water study and that was done by Ponzer and Youngquist. And basically what that does is looks at, uh, what we have now as far as water infrastructure and then what we're gonna need going forward, um, improvements that are gonna be needed along the way. And one of the things that came out when we did the conference of plan update was that we needed to go back and look at these type studies. One of the reasons being, you know, if we are gonna, uh, grow, what are we gonna need? Not just kinda taking a, you know, a blind approach and then we get a development that comes in and we go, ah, we, we don't have the infrastructure in place for that. So the idea with this is it'll set out a long-term kinda series of steps, um, to show us where we may be lacking and what we'll be needing going forward. Um, so that is the supplemental agreement number three. And then we have number four. There's a lot of pages here, I apologize for that, but anytime you deal with an engineering company, they have a lot of boilerplate, um, documents here. This is an update to the Tire Road Booster Pump Station. And this is actually called out in PW fifteen of our capital improvements program. Uh, but basically what that's gonna do is it's gonna increase our ability to, or increase the ability to pump. Right now, we're kinda slow when we come up and this was something that was called out in that previous two thousand and seven water study. Uh, but basically it just increases our pumping capacity. Um, it's something that we had, we've put off for a little while, but, yeah, it, it came up. Um, and there were funds available during budget time, so we are moving forward with that. Uh, and then, uh, I think I got those backwards in there.
Yeah, that was five.
Yeah, that was five. Sorry about that. Four is also a CIP project. It, it's actually two projects in one. Uh, there was a CIP project that took, uh, it's upgrading a water line that goes along Ryan Road to the, or Mentor to the south and then over on Ryan. And that's, uh, increasing the size of that line. With that, we're also having them do engineering services in kinda the older part of town with Theme and Mentor. As you can imagine, water lines when they're in the ground that long, um, things start to go bad and they're undersized. So this'll do two things. One, it'll, you know, kinda hopefully prevent any problems before they really, uh, come up. And then two, just increase our, our services in that area. Um, but basically, I know we should've started with this. Bartlett West is our consultant engineer, so we're under contract with them. But as we do these individual projects, we have to have supplemental agreements with them. So anytime that we actually have them do work like this, you'll see these supplemental agreements. That's why the titles are kinda boilerplate, but that's literally what the, what the contract says. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Have any questions or discussion?
Water line on the north side of Ryan.
Yes. Right now, it kinda, if you remember around budget time, it kinda cuts back into some properties and this would be coming straight, basically straight down along Mentor and then over on Ryan. Basically the length of that first big property that's there on the corner.
So it's just at that corner?
Yes.
What's going down?
No.
Anyone have anything else? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Resolutions R fifteen dash thirty-six and thirty-seven are resolutions by the Board of Alderman, City of Grand Valley, Missouri, reappointing Bob Dimmitt and Debbie Sappel, respectively, to two-year terms on the Grand Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Resolutions R fifteen dash thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve resolution fifteen dash thirty-six as read, and thirty-seven.
I have motion Alderman West to approve resolutions R fifteen dash thirty-six and R fifteen dash thirty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Haley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Resolution R fifteen dash thirty-eight is a resolution authorizing the City of Grand Valley, Missouri to enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement, SLCE, with State Bank of Missouri, ASLSOR, with respect to the acquisition of two two thousand and sixteen Ford SUV police interceptor vehicles. Resolution R fifteen dash thirty-eight.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution fifteen thirty-eight as read.
I have motion Alderman Arnold to approve resolution R fifteen dash thirty-eight. As read, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Haley. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was a little confused. Jim said two vehicles, it's three vehicles, isn't it?
Actually, we've cut back to two for this year.
Okay.
In the original quotes, we were quoting three different vehicles and that, actually, budget time, we budgeted three vehicles.
Because they, all the figures showed, it showed three vehicles, but twenty-one thousand pieces total of fifty-four.
No, actually, they're, no, I'm sorry, they're fifty thousand dollars. The total for the two vehicles is, let me, sorry, let me pull it up real quick.
Fifty-four, five twenty-five.
Chief, do you know off the top of your head what the total cost?
Fifty-four, five twenty-five.
Right, per vehicle. I'm looking for the four quote here.
Twenty-seven, oh fifty, per vehicle.
Yeah, the base price for the vehicles were twenty-five, four, forty-five. And then the options, that, after the, the options that are advanced, twenty-seven fifty, per vehicle. The original estimate was eighty-nine thousand dollars.
I'm trying to find, a million pages, I'm trying to find where the figures were.
Yeah, the, uh, second to last page is actually the quote from Shawnee Michigan.
Two fifteen, two sixteen is where the ordinance bill was.
I know where the ordinance is, I'm pretty figured on the vehicle. But I thought they said they were-
Should be the last page of your EFAK, last two pages.
Two, three, uh, I thought there was a figure actually showing a twenty-one thousand piece. I missed the figures, the individual figures now. Are these replacing two vehicles?
Yeah, there's, there's actually, um-
What are you gonna do with the other two vehicles?
I'm sorry?
What are you doing with the two replacements?
The two vehicles will actually be sold at auction, won't they, Chief?
Yes.
These are, these are both patrol, right, not admin.
Are you thinking about, are you looking at two forty-seven? Is that what you were looking at initially, Chuck?
Well, I, I, yeah, there was, there, there it shows the two of fifty-four. I guess one of it's, it shows something with three. I've got the three payment amounts, so, I'm gonna see, that's what confused me, that's okay.
Anyone have any additional discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, next item, the city attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Your Honor, thank you.
Next up is city administrator and staff reports.
Um, yes, Mayor. Uh, we'll start with Chief Starbuck and then Mr. Davies.
Mayor and Alderman, uh, just a reminder, this weekend, May second, we'll have two events, uh, down at the Hot Pots. We'll have our second coffee with the cop, which was very, uh, successful. We'll have that at nine o'clock in the morning and people can come in and have the opportunity to chat with, uh, officers. And then from, uh, ten to noon, we'll have the community, um, shredding and prescription drug disposal event out here in the parking lot of the community center. Grand Valley residents can drop off up to three boxes or sacks of items to be securely shredded. And then we will also accept, uh, prescription, uh, medications, uh, for safe disposal. Uh, the following weekend, on May ninth, we will have a, um, bike rally down at the, uh, parking lot of the high school on Eagles. It'll be, uh, hosted, uh, both members of the police department and our VIPS. And, uh, we've done a lot of, uh, of interaction with the schools to promote that. It'll be giving, we have some helmets to give away to the kids. We've got a donated bicycle and, uh, we're anxious to promote the whole concept of safety to the kids on bikes right before they get out for summer vacation.
Mr. Davies?
Uh, Mayor and Board, just wanted to provide an update on, uh, you putting along-
Mayor and Ward, just wanted to provide an update on youth baseball and softball. Youth baseball game action started tonight. So we had our first games about nine on the mountain park and, for softball and youth ball games this part of the week or five, nine update.
Mr. Abrams, Mayor.
Mayor, time to the board, there are flyers, there are flyers in front of you, that talk about our required, our even required elective body training that is required by our interior. June 6th at Midwest Public Risk Campus, this is Saturday, from 8:30 to 2:00. It's elective official liability training. This is a little bit of a different twist, it will be put on by Joe Lawler, who most of you know, and it's at no charge to the city since we are members of Midwest Public Risk. So I encourage you all to attend if this session is possible, otherwise I believe Mr. Lawler is having some other training seminars on this thing issue, but it will be through a small talk to the city. So please let me know or tell me now ASAP if we can attend and we will, our team.
These are mandatory meetings now, they never used to be?
They usually come here, we usually use our folks to do elective official liability training. It's requirement for our law control program. You only set this to one, most of our employees, yes, Pete.
I've never been to one before and I didn't know we'd.
Well, we've had, we've.
I think the last time we had Davey from MML.
We'd meet at the community center with somebody and go over stuff with us, we've done that before.
We've had it with Jared Nicholson, we did it with Jessica from Ensign Jester and we also have one here, I believe Matt gifted one of yours as well, so it's something that obviously is sticking with you, so that's. So just letting you know if you need to cancel, if you couldn't make it. If not, we can get you some other dates and, you know, I don't know, if you can look for that here. All right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I just have a few things. Unfortunately, I want to let you know that we will be canceling the recognition ceremony for the school district this week, the 30th. We've had a problem with getting the information from the school district, we've kind of had a logjam several times. We did talk to several of the administrators and the problem is, is getting the response, not necessarily from school administration, but getting the contact information for all of the kids that have been recognized. We were, we'd reached out several times and we were up against the agenda deadline and we still didn't have any of the information for the kids, so certainly don't want to make it seem like the school district was being non-responsive. They were, I just think that they probably had some concerns, some of the coaches and some of the sponsors had concerns about sending that information out and it came to a point to where they questioned if the second ceremony was actually necessary. I would still like to pursue it, it's just not something that we're going to be having March 30th, or April 30th. Next, I wanted to let you know that we're going to have a, we're trying to schedule a joint workshop between the Park Board and the Board of Alderman, per Alderman Arnold's questions and the discussion that we've been having about the authority of each one of those boards. The date that Mr. Davies is going to be checking for is May 11th or May 26th. Those are regular board meeting nights. We figured that we would do it that night just because it's more convenient to assemble the Board of Alderman and honestly, we have to pay you for an extra meeting if you come on and off night, so just looking at the bottom line there as well. So I don't see any of those being a conflict for any of you because you'll be here, but I just wanted to report that by the next board meeting, hopefully we'll have confirmation. And then the final item is that you should have a roster of all the boards and commissions up in front of you. We discussed this last week briefly, just want to remind you that it is time to reappoint liaisons with turnover that we've had on the board as well as reappoint the mayor pro temp and so we're going to be doing that on the May 11th board meeting. The mayor appoints the liaisons, the mayor pro temp is voted by the entire board, so have some discussion about that, decide who we want those people to be and obviously with the mayor pro temp, then you guys will make the motion for that on whoever that person's going to be and that's going to be happening on the March 11th meeting.
May.
May 11th, sorry, I'm stuck in March. And I have nothing further, Mayor.
Next up is Board of Alderman reports a comment. Alderman Arnold.
I don't know if it's on or not, but organizations like the Fan Prince Association, if we don't have the due date on the application, let me make sure that it's on there.
You'll have to check that.
I can see what's, it's listed in the ordinances, but they weren't looking at that, they're just looking at the applications they had in hand, so if it's not on there, make sure we get it on, help them out, all of us aren't put in the same position. Hopefully. On the lending institutions and the, we're going to continue to work on that to get those regulations taken care of, right?
Yeah, actually the next up is finding a deal with Mr. Cook, have a workshop with Planning and Zoning Commission, that was the next thing they had asked, but yeah, that basically we've given ourselves that six months to come up with something.
Hopefully we can get it done quicker than that, so.
Yeah, I would think it probably will, but it gets a little tougher.
Okay, that's all, Mayor.
Alderman West.
Yes, I would personally like to thank the city and particularly the employees that are involved with Main Street and the fact that you have really been doing an excellent job notifying the businesses when their streets were going to be closed. And I can speak personally that Cannon was not closed on April the 15th, it was closed that Friday, but it was open on April 15th and I appreciate that.
In fact, Alderman Rick has done a really good job working with Villas Ardi and they have a person that basically their job is to do the, kind of the PR side of things and for day one, hard to hard that they have to go out and know something's going to happen. Obviously weather plays a factor in that, but they've done a good job at this point.
They've done an excellent job and that sign helps a lot to let people know what's coming up. That's wonderful, thank you.
Alderman Headley.
Just for clarification, Ryan, the workshop with the Park Board, would that be starting at 6:00 PM?
Yes, that would be starting at 6:00 PM, yes, sir.
Okay, that's, I have nothing else, thanks.
Alderman Stanley.
I have this time.
Alderman Palacek.
I have this time.
Alderman Johnson.
I had a question, I've heard some rumor about the farmer's market could be behind the community center or something now?
It's going to be over at Armstrong Park.
Could be at Armstrong Park.
Yeah. Shannon, would you like to just give them the details of when it's going to be?
Yeah, we had some discussion with Zach on it, it's actually a session through the last several years about me and the Park Board actually spoke to the Park Board on this, having it in a spot that's heavily traffic flow. So, yeah, the main thing for us is we didn't want it to impact our operations or take away those evenings where shelter rentals refer and impact any private parties or anything like that. So we're looking at Park Lot right here off of Main in front of Shelter on, on select, I believe it's two stands.
Yeah.
For that.
I have something, Mayor's report. I have nothing for tonight. Next up is executive session, I believe we do have a need for executive session for real estate.
Yes, Mayor.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That being said, I will entertain a motion and we turn into executive session for real estate.
So moved.
Motion from Alderman Arnold, do I have a second? Second, Alderman Headley.
Thank you.
All fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alderman Arnold.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Stanley.
Yes.
Alderman Palacek.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson. All right, we'll turn to executive session.